Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 19, 2024. If it seems like I'm excited today, I am. This is a, it's been a wonderful day. Started off in the middle of the day, and then tonight, when I finish, hopefully, in a few minutes, y'all will see why I am so excited in terms of what Cumberland County produces all over this country. So with that, I'm gonna call on Commissioner Jones to do our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Stand. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this holiday, and we thank you for allowing us to join here on this evening. We ask that everything be done in decency and order, and with respect and with love. God, we ask for you to uplift our country. As we know, there are many awards taking place, not only abroad, but here in the United States as well. Lord, we ask that you just keep our youth safe, keep our parents safe, and keep all those that are here safe. Lord, we ask that you would just touch our hearts and touch our souls, and help our community be uplifted, so that we can work together. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. So, the very first reason that I'm all excited is today, we had a groundbreaking ceremony for our homeless support center. It was fantastic. If you missed it, I think it's gonna be on our website, it's on YouTube, it's on everything. And I got my P O office here. You all ought to go see it. It is, I think, yeah, see, look at that. They got pictures right there, up on the screen, throwing some dirt today.
Look at Glenn working.
Hey, man. The hardest work I've done in a while up there.
You did a good job. Everyone did a good job with that today. That was, that was a proud moment today. Y'all did really well.
And, and this is gonna be transformative for this community, because not only is it a homeless shelter, there are always people who want to come in and get out of the inclement weather, and then they want to go back out the next day. But there's also some homeless folk in our community who says, "I want to be able to do a little bit more than that." So, not only is it gonna be a shelter, but we're also gonna have housing for single men, single women, and for families who want to stay there. And we've taken that and collaborated with Fayetteville Technical Community College to be able to help them move to that next level. And I think the vice chair said it well, not only that, but mental health and drug addiction and all of that. And I've always talked about that we can either pay for this on the front end or the back end. And this board has decided, we're gonna do it on the front end. We're gonna have case managers there to be able to help folk. Because sometimes when you're down on your luck, it takes a little bit more, it takes a little bit of energy to be able to be able to get to all of these resources. You know, thank goodness for the health department that does Uber. You know, if you live out in the western part of this county, and you have to get anywhere downtown or anywhere in this community, you have to take a bus, get down, transfer, and go. And so, we decided that your transportation's good, we're gonna do it by Uber. Just call the Uber, and you can get directly to where you need to be, as opposed to trying to do all that transfer. And the reason was that is that I was at Walmart, and I saw this old lady, not old lady, elderly lady, 'cause I ain't gonna get myself in trouble tonight. But you know, you can tell, I always get myself in trouble. I, I like to eat, and so, I was standing there talking to her, and she says, "I can't buy any ice cream." Because by the time I wait for the bus to come and get home, my ice cream is melted. And I like some ice cream, some butter pecan ice cream with a little bit of these Girl Scout cookies. I'm just gonna tell you, it works. But, I will tell you, and I'm gonna let some of the other commissioners weigh in, this is not something that just happens. This takes vision. And Commissioner Keith is down on the end, and Commissioner Fairclough, they probably served longer than the rest of us on this board and saw when it started, so I'm gonna let them say a couple of words. And we've got Commissioner Booth and I came on at the same time, and we heard the citizens and other commissioners talk about it. And then Commissioner Stewart came, and as I said today, she's the one that pushes us even further and, and better. And then Commissioner Jones, who knows that we do this for the people. And so, with all of that, I'm, Mr. Keith, Commissioner Keith, if you want to have a couple of words?
Only a couple.
Just a couple?
Okay.
I'll tell ya.
Well, it is a good day, because I think too many times, people get, you know, we, we get put in this little hole of homelessness, and you have to understand why, why these people have homelessness. I, I think the part about this that we really need to bring together is the partnerships that happen. And not only is it a partnership with the county and the city, but the partnerships with FTCC. Because I think everybody knows that the only way, really, to get out of poverty is through education. You have to have education. And what this center is going to do, it's just not a shelter. It's a training center. It's right beside a school that FTCC already has. And they have a program, partly funded by the commissioners on the HOPE program, that we put in years ago, that has already had more than 160 graduates to it. These are people who didn't have a trade, have a trade now, that are part of the workforce, and God knows that we need that in our community. But this program that we are doing in partnership will allow someone who is maybe at the shelter to, we've taken away all their impediments. There's no transportation problem, because they can go right there to, and get educated. They can, they can have the tools they need. They have set up for a job with a private employer that is ready to hire anyone who joins that, that crowd right now. So immediately, we can stop generational poverty in as little as nine to 12 months from, by training people who have the will to be trained. And I think that we're doing the infrastructure to make that happen, and now's an opportunity for anybody who wants to change a life, their life, the lives of their family, and their lives of their future kids, now's the time that they can do that, and they can do that at this center. Thank you.
I'll go to Commissioner Booth. If not, I go to Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, sir. No, I just want to tack onto that. I'll probably get the numbers right, but Dr. Sorrels, the president of Fayetteville Tech, was talking about the HOPE program, and I believe he said 74% of that first class went through there and all, all graduated and successfully completed the program. 62% of that were employed at $15 an hour or higher, and the ones of the 62 that didn't go out immediately, it's not, they didn't go home. They, they're pursuing the associate's degree, the GED, the additional education that they need, because they see that it can happen if they'll, you know, put a little muscle into it, that the resources are now there.
Not only, to add on to what both Commissioner Keith and Commissioner Booth said, even our partners, Cape Fear Valley, there are so many, and when I say so many, I'm not kidding, there's, there are people in the hospital that have no medical reason to be at the hospital, but because you cannot release them without having an address, then they have to stay in the hospital. And so, that, that's beds being taken up, and beds are the one thing that we need, like yesterday. I guarantee you, we have under, just with shelter, we have under 60 beds. Ms. Skeens, around about 60 beds, that's a high number here in the entire county. For over 360-plus thousand people, only 60-plus people, if homeless can get shelter for that night. And so, people in the hospital don't need to be there. So every time you got, people complain about being, not being able to get a bed at Cape Fear, we need to provide a bed for them. And so, this will be able to do that. I am so excited about what this board has done. We started out with the, with the help from the state who gave us a million dollars, the AARP committee, which agreed on $250,000 to add to that, which is Commissioner Keith and Commissioner Adams. And today, it's just been a day that made serving worth serving. And I'm so excited about it. So, thank you, board. Thank you, staff, for making this day. Manager Greer, thank you for everybody for everything. It's been a, it's been a great day. Long time coming.
Commissioner Fairclough.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, a lot of people can be helped by what was done today. But, but I think about all those that we can't help. And I'm talking about mental illness, substance abuse, and there are a lot of reasons why people are homeless, but, but those reasons are the most intractable, as we like to say. And I'm, I'm, I'm probably looking out here, I'm probably one of the oldest people in this room, but I, I can remember as a kid, you used to hear parents tell their children, "If you keep acting like that, we're gonna send you to Dick's Hill." And some of y'all might have heard that, too. But if you look up now, what, what used to be Dick's Hill is now a beautiful park for, for the people in Wake County, not the people in Cumberland County. People in Cumberland County is still dealing with mental illness, whereas it was, it became, it became, I won't say unfashionable, but certainly just not, not humane to institutionalize people who were not criminally insane, or whatever the situation is. And I don't know all the right politically correct terms, and I don't try to, try to do that. But those problems still exist in, in, in large measure. And while the folks in Wake County are really enjoying that beautiful park, those problems have been pushed down from the federal and state level to the county level. So, part of, part of what you saw today, we saw today, is a culmination of what the county is having to pick up, that the government levels above us have let slide. So, we're happy to be able and be in a position to be able to do that. And we hope that it is sustainable as we go forward. And we hope that it's not a situation where we build and they will come. We hope that's not the situation. We hope that we can help people and, and continue to, to do good things in the community. And, and that, that's, that's something that you don't get a lot of credit for. But, but when you, when you see a problem, if you can work with it and help with it, at least you get a good feeling, you know? And I think we, we have a lot to, to kind of feel good about this, this evening. Thank you for letting me say that.
Commissioner Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy that we're making strides in the right direction. I had the opportunity to be involved with a, actually, a national movement, and it's called Sleep Out America. I would like to thank the Fayetteville PAC organization, nonprofit. I've seen one of their leaders here tonight, Mr. Akaleko Hurst in the back. But it was a very enlightening experience for myself. I was not a county commissioner at the time. Again, it was called Sleep Out America, so I actually got to sleep out with the homeless and talk to them, and other nonprofit groups as well were out there. So, this is definitely a step in the right direction. I know the last report that was given back in 2023 and 2020, we were up by 75% here in Cumberland County, and it was an estimate of 475 homeless people in our county. So, anything that we can do to keep, continue to move forward, I'm pleased that we're making those steps in the right direction.
Thank you. And I will tell you, and that, we sit up here today and talk about this board who voted to do this. We, we do set policy. But I do want to recognize the staff, because they put in countless hours to be able to do this. The manager, his staff, the assistant managers, Jermaine Walker with engineering, I can go on and on, Dee Taylor and everybody, Heather Skeens, Sally Shutt, Brian Haney. But it took all of our departments working together. So, even though we sit up here and we saying what a great job it was, that's the background that does the work. That's the people who do the work for the citizens of this community. And we don't want to ever make, we want to always make sure that we thank you all for the hard work that you all did. And y'all made us look good today.
Absolutely.
I'll tell you what, it's hard to make this crew look good. I'm all right, but the rest of them, I don't know about. Well, all right. So, I told y'all, it was such an exciting day. So, I had that. But now let me come down, 'cause I'll tell you what.
I'm sorry. You might have didn't see my button.
I did, 'cause we finished that.
I just had something I wanted to add to that, if you'd mind.
Make it quick.
I'll make it quick, 'cause I seen some of our advocates come in. We want to thank our staff, but we also want to thank our community staff and nonprofits, because we do hear you. So, I see Joseph and some other, again, nonprofit members, 'cause we do represent them. So, we thank you as well.
Thank you.
It's a good thing I got, everybody has my back. That's, that's, you know, it's always good to make sure you got people who keep you straight and keep you in order. Oh, you laughed at that. He thought that was pretty funny right there. All right, look, Natasha Yvette Williams, Grammy Award winner. I don't know why you frowning. Come on up here. Oh, she's about to cry. Let me tell you all this. Oh, so I go to church, and when I wanted to sing in the choir, they told me to sing a solo, solo that nobody could hear me. I can't sing, I can't dance, but I do know talent when I see it. And I'm gonna just tell you, this is talent. I tell you, yeah, give her a clap. Natasha Yvette Williams has come home. And I'm gonna tell you that it is exciting when I learned that I might be able to get her here, to be able to talk to us. It's not every day that every community in America gets to get a Tony-nominated person, and then a Grammy-winning person to come to their community, live in their community. And this is what she, if you watched the Grammys the other night, I think you cried on there, too, didn't you? She was crying on there. But she went to Cape Fear High School, right here in Cumberland County, and graduated from, huh? Oh, wait a minute, calm down. See, see how you let, you let people in the room? You see what happens when you let people in the room? I tell you what. But anyway, coat pride. And she went to Cape Fear High School, but we're gonna go a little bit past that, because she had her teacher here.
That's right.
Who taught her what grade?
Fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth grade. And you know, when your fifth and sixth grade teacher gives up an evening and an afternoon to come out to see you, that tells you what an impression you made at an early age. And Marsha, you better talk to her. There might be some clothes akin to you. They're Faircloughs. I don't know, but you might want to check with them.
If they're in 100 mile radius of Fayetteville, they're akin to me, I tell you.
I actually told his son.
Oh. And I think he went to school with Natasha, too.
And, and so, I was sitting there in my house, watching on TV, and I was probably jumping for joy as much as anybody else. 'Cause there's a couple of things. The Natasha one, Jay, Mr. G, won the Tony, plus he won a Grammy. That's golden bull, so I just wanted to let you know that. However, tonight is Natasha's night. I would tell you that when I called her, we called her and asked her to come, she didn't hesitate to come back home to, to be in this community. But not only did she come here tonight, she took the time to go up to the regional theater and talk to kids up there who were in a production. Because one thing I, I do believe is this, is that everybody does different things. There are people who play sports, there are people who do a lot of other things. And so, kids need to see kids that, people that do what they do. Her first production at the regional theater was 13 years old. And so, that's where she got her start. She got her start right here in Cumberland County. You can't ask for much more than that. And to be able to have that talent and take it to Broadway. And you know, there are some people who go off to Broadway and all those other places who never come home, and never come back. And she came back. So, tonight, we want, where my glasses at? I lost them earlier today. Thank goodness somebody found them when I was out there. At the groundbreaking, was so exciting, I left my glasses out there, couldn't see. I probably ran over a couple of, oh, never mind. So, this is the proclamation. Whereas, Natasha Yvette Williams is an accomplished American actress, singer, and entertainer. And whereas, Natasha has graced the Broadway stage in various roles, to include Tina in the Tina Turner musical, Chicken and Biscuits, Waitress, Chicag-, you know, I knew all this, did you? Waitress, Chicago, A Night with Jan, Janis Joplin, The Gershon, Porky and Best, and The Color Purple. And whereas, Natasha's West End credits include Trevor Nunn's production of Gone With the Wind. And she, you remember all of that, huh? Taking you back, huh? And, and she has appeared in national tours of Xanadu, The Trousers Chaperone, The Elvis Musical, All Shook Up, Seussical the Musical, Cinderella Parade, and The Goodbye Girl. And whereas, oh, y'all didn't know, her television credits, also in the television, includes Run with the World. Do you remember that? Partner track, Harlem, FBI, New Amsterdam, The Good Fight, and The Godfather of Harlem. Her film credits includes the historical thriller, Alice, and the Disney movie Better Nate Than Ever. And whereas, as an alumnus of Cape Fear High School in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and North Carolina A&amp;T. Yeah, I'm an Eagle, but that's okay. See, that, we over there. Natasha shares this advice with current students. Absorb everything during your training, and give your best when you step into the spotlight. And whereas, Natasha has released a gospel project titled Songs That Carried Me Through. Y'all go buy that, 'cause you know, she came down here. Y'all buy that. And whereas, Natasha's a loving wife to Gregory. Stand up, Gregory. All right. And proud, and proud mother of Niall and Mackenzie. Where my, there, over there. Yeah, they been back in the back all day. And whereas, Natasha won a Grammy at the 66th Annual Grammy Awards for Best Musical Theater Album, as the principal vocalist in the original song, Some Like It Hot. And now, therefore, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Natasha Yvette Williams for her contribution to music and entertainment. Her talent and success are inspiring to others. Thank you for your contribution to the performing arts and to music. Presented this 19th day of February 2024, signed by me as the chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, but presented by your Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. And we have a little gift for you, so you can sit here and talk a little bit. So now y'all see why this day is just, it's just been one that I've been, since about three or four o'clock, just having a wonderful time. And thank you so very much for coming. Thank you. Thank you. Give you a couple of words here. You can take more than a couple.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna try not to be long before you. I, I just want to say thank you. I, and congratulations on the, the breaking ground of the homeless shelter. I think it's very appropriate that that happened today, on the day that I came home. Fayetteville is home. And, and all of you, there's so many people in this room that I could stand up and thank, and I do want to take just a moment to thank Ms. Fairclough, who changed my life, really, in the fifth grade. She was so hard on me. I wasn't, I wasn't a bad kid, but I, but I did lose my homework all the time. I couldn't keep up with anything. And she really zeroed in on my potential, and gave me so much wonderful, stern advice, that taught me the importance of education, and how I value, to value myself is to value what I'm depositing in, so that the best can come out. That came from my fifth and sixth grade class, in the person of Ms. Deborah Callahan-Godwin Fairclough. I do, 'cause you are everything to me. So, all of those facets of your life touch my life. So, I thank you. My, I started, yes, at the Cape Fear Regional Theater, doing, at 13. But prior to that was my church. I was in everything they had. My dad was the pastor, and David Williams, and whatever they had going on, we were there for, for that reason. But there's some members of Shiloh here today that came in. Shiloh United Church of Christ really birthed, birthed me. Y'all can stand if you can. Stand if you can. Okay, so thank you, Shiloh. Okay, who else I seen? Oh, I was in the 4H Clubs of America, under the direction of Ms. Betty Green, who is also here today. It is just outstanding to see you. With 4H, I did public speaking, and talent shows, and, and, and like cooking stuff, and growing things, and everything you could do, I tried to do it. And I went to camp with the 4H Clubs, and it was just amazing. Fayetteville gave me the opportunity to nurture every thought I had, every dream I had, every hope I had, was found in the sands of Fayetteville and Cumberland County. So, I thank you for everything that you've given me. My parents, David and Bronny Williams, were gods to me, because of the deposits and the way they supported me. I've got classmates here, Ms. Daisy's here, Ms. Mary's here. I just want to thank all of you for, for being in my corner and pushing me. Thank you. Oh, Kleenex, yes. I'm, I'm doing good. I'm doing good.
You're all doing pretty good.
Doing pretty good.
Earlier than that.
Doing pretty good. I think I'm dry. My Uncle Hodges is here. If you can stand, Uncle Hodges, if you can, it's all right. Okay, yeah, he got it, he got it, he got it. Thank you, Uncle Hodges. It's my mother's baby, my mother's brother, they're next to each other in age, but they used to argue all the time. So, he kept her straight, and he kept me straight, going, going up, too. So, thank you. Jay McCray, thank you so much. Another colleague and friend. And Tracy Pope, Tracy's actually from Wilmington, North Carolina, and I'm in a play there now called Death of a Salesman. It happens this weekend and next weekend. And she came down just to be supportive as well. And that's what Fayetteville has been to me. That's what North Carolina has been to me. So, there's no reason not to come back. I'm always welcomed and always home, and I'm always reminded of the gifts that were deposited into me, that I can now give out as I go forth. 'Cause the Grammy's great, but we're not done. We're not done. God has many things in store. And I plan to show up and show out wherever he allows it. So, thank you. Yes, I thank them. I thank them. They're fine.
Show them the milk. See, see, y'all don't get this close to touch it like I do now. See, the Grammy's not ready yet, so she didn't bring it, but she brought the medallion.
Yes. That's a Tiffany medallion from the Grammy Committee, that was given to all the nominees, and the, the Grammy itself has been engraved.
As soon as I go ahead and cut it on off.
No, no, no. Don't cut it off. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else who want, come on up. I'm not big. Anybody else who want to come on up, I'll have pictures now, they'll take, come on. I'll get everybody a camera, y'all supposed to use on Facebook. Yeah, look, I'm gonna be everywhere. I ain't, I'm gonna just tell you, I ain't asking a Grammy winner that night, look, that office. I'm gonna take the opportunity.
I hope Glenn never wins a Grammy. He'll never sit down.
I'll never sit down. No, they can't take no pictures. I still got cameras in here. Anybody else who want to take a picture, I'll.
This is Cape Fear, Cape Fear.
Oh, come on.
And thank Paul, Paul's taking pictures. He's a journalist. Thank you. Thank you.
Nobody signed up to speak, nobody signed up to speak for the public hearing. Because I got a toilet anyway. I gotta pull it. What are you down there talking about? I just do it for myself. One's quick.
That means the other's not. He didn't say they're quick.
Say what? How much is a social cost? Have they said how much is a social cost? We haven't even done the line.
Everything, everything is. We're getting an estimate, only after they're gonna tell you it's up to twenty-seven million. You go, how do you know that?
Okay, so now we're going to the consent.
To the public comment period. All right, that will take us to our public comment period. Our, ask the manager to read our public comment procedure.
The public comment periods shall last no longer than fifteen minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the fifteen minute limit is attained. No time may be yielded to a speaker by another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order in which their name appear on the sign up sheet. Speakers will address the board from and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of any person seeking public office. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Written comments and or supporting documents may be left with the clerk to the board.
Thank you. It's my understanding that we've got eight speakers. So we will go down to two minutes each on the public comment period, which would take us over the fifteen minutes, take us to sixteen minutes, but I think that's fair for everybody to be able to speak. Madam Clerk, who's the first speaker?
Angelina Smith.
Ms. Angelina Smith. All right, next speaker.
Richard Johnson.
Mr. Johnson.
Good evening.
Pull that mic back, I left it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, my name is Richard Johnson. This is about Pine Lane, a piece of property that's over there on southern end of Lake Up Church and that area over there. I'm here for my community more than I am for myself. Hoping that we can get something done. DOT's approved. And we got some pictures, I don't know if you want to show them. You got them, okay. And just want to note that DOT has approved to pave this street and maintain it. It's just a matter of one little area in the, in the road that shows on the map there, that yellow part of it, if you can see it. There's a ditch there that a pipe's been there for, since nineteen sixty-nine from what I've done on my history check on everything. But it's collapsed now. And there's other things that's going on over there too, as far as the road itself. It's not being maintained properly. I've tried for the last, since two thousand and fifteen, and tried to get DOT involved in this. But the lady up the street there, past this ditch, had an instance where she needed an ambulance. And she needed, the fire truck showed up, the road collapsed and almost got stuck. And the ambulance and everything did the same thing. Something's got to be done as far as, you know, this road because it's, it's not just a health problem for people there that's old, that can't main, have any kind of rescue squad to go down in that area anymore. One of the letters I gave to tell you, I don't know if you've read it or not, but the chief for the fire department there, Stony Point, said that he recommended heartily that that road be repaired. And DOT agrees also, it's just a matter of the funding that we can get set aside. I think it's gonna cost anywhere between twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to put the type of pipe that they've recommended to be in there for their specs and all that stuff. But like I said, there's a lot of stuff that's going on, on that street and everything that
You can finish that sentence.
Needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Georgiana Pinkney.
Ms. Pinkney. She must be coming to thank us. But go ahead.
Greetings, everyone. I'm Georgiana Pinkney. I reside at thirty-five twenty-nine Furman Drive, zip is two eight three zero four. I am the founder and executive director of Greater Life of Fayetteville. And we offer services to grades one through eight and low to medium income based families. This nonprofit was birthed out of my own life experience where my children and I, my husband at that time told us that he didn't want us anymore and we had to go. So I had two beautiful girls and eight months pregnant. So moving from place to place and not getting financial support. We, my children encountered so many obstacles. And we became foster, a foster care home later on down the road where my children befriended a little girl who went through a traumatic experience. So Greater Life of Fayetteville, we offer short term suspension program. If the child has been placed in other schools' short term suspension, we ask the parents to bring them to us and let us work with them. We also offer three days after school tutoring up until five-thirty in the evenings. And also monthly parenting community workshops. It's open to everyone, but the parents whose children are in our program are required to be a part. And we offer ten to twelve workshops per year. And as you may have, we are hosting one this, this Thursday, on the twenty-ninth. First time home buyers, for those who are interested in becoming homeowners. Because when I went through my experience, I did not know that there were benefits to becoming a first time home, homeowner. And we also offer a five week summer academy called I Am Unique because every child is unique in their own way. We target the grades that they're going into. We target government, cultural arts, historical arts, you name it, vocals, music, to help build the overall child. And what I'm asking from you is, is your support with upfront funds. You know, we get grants, yes, but a lot of those grants are reimbursement grants. But that will help us to expand the quality of our services and also staff members as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But let me just make this point though, because you said Thursday, but it's next Thursday, the twenty-ninth.
Next Thursday on the twenty-ninth.
Not this Thursday, it's the next Thursday.
And it's at the Smith Recreation Center from five-thirty to six forty-five.
Okay, I didn't want them to get confused on which Thursday. Madam Clerk.
Ken Slankard.
Mr. Slankard.
Ken Slankard, I live in Southern Hope Mills, Grace Creek area. I'm sure you guys got handouts provided. And I'm here to address the illegal dumping and just horrendous conditions out there. The county areas are, are areas that are being ignored. The amount of trash, the amount of wells that are contaminated, coming on now the western side of three oh one. It's getting worse out there, but they keep building more and more. So I know there's revenue coming in. But we need to be focused on the health and safety of the people out there. Okay, you got kids out there that don't have clean water to drink. Okay, we've got farmlands out there that are polluted with plastics because of the illegal dumping. We've got to come up with solutions to fix these problems out there. Okay, and I know it's not just here. Okay? Fifteen million tons of trash was collected on the streets of North Carolina this past year at a cost of twenty-five million dollars to taxpayers. This is unacceptable, right? You are our de facto mayors out there, okay? The commissioners are our de facto mayors. You are our representatives. Without you, we can't get anything done out there because we don't have mayors or city councilmen to do the work for us. Okay, so we, we bring the problems to you and hope for solutions. This is my second time in front of this board. I was here two years ago with the same problems. Okay? This board needs to empower and fund the county offices that can support those areas out there. The sheriff's department, code enforcement needs to have teeth to be able to start fining people for this dumping. And, and, and people that have substandard housing or trash piled up in the front of their yards, they need to be fined. Properties that property taxes are not being paid on need to be seized and sold and the money needs to go back into the community.
Thank you.
Joseph Wheeler.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
First, I'd really like to thank you so much for what you did today. That means a lot to the homeless community. Joseph Wheeler with the Homeless Assembly, if you don't know who I am. And you're stepping up in a way to recognize how many beds are needed in this county where the city has failed to represent for the homeless. I really, the homeless community really does appreciate the work that you're doing and are about to do. One thing that we are asking though, is as you move forward with this great tremendous project, please include the voices of the homeless on this project. Let us tell you what we need. When you have an HOA, the best people on the HOA are the ones who lives in the houses. Similarly, if you need a SNE, you go to somebody who knows what they're talking about. Nobody knows what it's like to be homeless unless you are homeless. Many advocates can be out here, many people who run nonprofits can be out here, many organizations. Unless they actually have lived experience, they cannot voice what is needed. So please include that in the continued planning of this great project that you broke ground on today. I can't thank you enough for making the energy and the effort to do this today. It was an amazing thing. I look forward to greater things from the county commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Tricia James.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Like to thank you guys for having me and allowing me to speak. My concern
Give your name and address.
Tricia James, sixteen twenty-seven Bingham Drive. My concern this evening is the fact that they are requesting, the city, county is requesting under the bridge to be cleaned out. The issue is, is so far what I've heard, out of all of the people who have resided under the bridge, only seven have been given a place to stay or to go to. What is happening as far as the groundbreaking is wonderful news, I'm excited about it. But what I don't want to see is it be a replica of the Day Center that has basically wasted the taxpayers' money thus far. I've walked through it, I've seen it. I have been working with the homeless population for many years. As Joe Wheeler just stated, when you're dealing with people who really don't understand homelessness, it's hard to put plans into place that are effective. As Mr. Fairclough was saying earlier regarding the ones who are not being helped dealing with mental health issues and dealing with substance abuse, this is something that really needs to be zeroed in on because this is the majority. The people that you guys are going to be working with and that you guys are gonna have impact on are newly homeless that got unhoused, that were unhoused due to COVID or due to inflation issues. That's wonderful, education is gonna work well for them. But the ones who are struggling with mental health issues and are struggling with depression and so on and so forth, those are gonna be the ones that are not impacted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vicki Mullins.
Ms. Mullins.
Here we go again. So my name is Vicki Mullins, I live at five nine oh five Turnbull Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two eight three one two. Once again, I am coming before you. I'm just gonna ask a question. How long before you're gonna get me decent water? I'm still carrying water, gallon jugs. How long? It's been six years. I thought I grew out of this when I grew up, okay? I do not live in Grace Creek, okay? I live in Cedar Creek, east of the river. So don't put me with Grace Creek. I'm working with them, yes, but I live in Cedar Creek. And this is ridiculous. So what are you guys doing as a board to help get water? You're still building houses, there's brand new houses going in right next door to me. Why are they disclosing that there's Gen X in the water? I don't think so, but they're gonna know when I get through because I'm gonna put my signs up. Okay? This is ridiculous. Get us some water. You know, you need to tell my grandson, I'll tell you this, we went to West Virginia. My one middle grandson turned his water, turned on the water for my niece. My littlest one went to screaming in tears. You can't drink that water. I said, no, baby, that's how normal people live. That's how normal people live, that you can drink the water. Because he was a baby when all this started happening. And he is eight years old now. It is, it's time to get this resolved. I understand the studies, don't get me wrong. The studies have been great. The studies have give you enough info and everything to support all this. It's time to get the water.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chaleko Hurst.
Mr. Hurst.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start off, my name is Chaleko Hurst, twelve thirty-four Wayside Drive. First, I'd like to start by, once again, thanking you for what you've did with the center. Especially the work that Ms. Stewart has done with the homeless previously at the Women's Homeless Shelter over here on Person Street. She didn't receive the funding that they presently receive now, and I take that personally. I've seen this woman sick and ill, still assisting the homeless in her office at that building. I thank you for what you did, Ms. Veronica Jones, mentioning the work that Fayetteville PAC. And overall, I thank everyone on this board. The second thing I want to talk to, I need for y'all to implement the power that y'all have to address this issue, what happened in Addison murder, murder case. That was a hate crime that Chairman Adams' wife chaired over. Even though Mr. Noble has a life sentence, his son received no time, nothing, hasn't even been arrested. And his father got on the stand in the courtroom and said his son disassembled the murder weapon. Look at me. Tell me what state in this country they call America where two black men can be present at a murder scene and both of us don't get charged. Please explain that to me. I'm good with my nouns, my pronouns, and my adjectives. Explain it to me. So I need for y'all to address that issue with DA West. Thirdly, you have a couple judicial officials, Cumberland County judges. For whatever reason, they do not let African-American men represent themselves in the courtroom without penalizing them. Fourthly, the court reporter thing that Judge Tyler and Weeks came up with, we're thankful for that. Thank you for your time consideration. Have a great day. Have a great day.
There are no more speakers.
There are no other speakers. We will close the public comment period. We will then go to the approval of the agenda. Man, did you agree, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, two changes to the agenda, Chairman Adams. Number one, public hearings, we need to remove the public hearing. Case number MH six six three eight.
Number three, no public hearings, okay.
And then we need to have a closed session to consider economic development and...
Okay. Is that the only thing?
And the consideration of a contract.
Okay.
An attorney-client matter.
Attorney-client matter, all right. If I can get a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of them.
They're moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
They're to take us to the consent agenda. Any items to be pulled from this consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of them.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, no public hearings, no item of business nominations. I will call on Vice Chairwoman Stewart.
The Cumberland County Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee has one vacancy, and they recommend Sigma Smith for appointment. The Farm Advisory Board has one vacancy, and they recommend Joey Short for the appointment. The Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Committee has one vacancy, and they recommend Charles McLaurin for appointment.
Hearing nothing else, they're to take us to appointments, and I'll call on the Vice Chairwoman Stewart.
Farm Advisory Board has one vacancy, and there is a motion to appoint Wayne Coglin to the Farm Advisory Board.
Stay at second. It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
I would like to make a motion to appoint the following nominees to the Local Emergency Planning Committee, Johnny Lanthorne, Utility Representative, and Gary Clark, the Law Enforcement Representative.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
The, I would like to make a motion to appoint the following nominees to the Equalization and Review Board, Jasane Morales for the home builders, George Turner for real estate agent broker, Jasper, Jackie Lewis, the farmer, Mark Knight at the at-large and lettered hedge pet for businessman.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. With that, I will recess the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting, and I will convene the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Body meeting. So with the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Body consent agenda, if I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of them. Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
I will adjourn the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Body meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before you do that, I would, just as a point of information, Mr. Gray, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if our finance people or yourself, do you have, do you have a figure for what we have committed to this point for the Graves Creek area and the Cedar Creek area and all those other areas that have contamination? How much money have we committed so far?
I have a firm of this number, but right now, approximately total, not issued, but about forty million dollars.
Forty-eight million dollars?
Forty million.
Forty million dollars, okay.
Forty-three million. I know the number by exact, but it's forty-three million dollars.
Thank you.
With that, I will adjourn the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Body meeting and reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. And if I can get a motion to go into closed session for Economic Development and Attorney-client Privilege.
Some of them going closer.
It's been moved, it's been second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Yes, unanimous, we will go into closed session.
And we're back, and if I can get a motion to come out of closed session.
It's been moved to second.
Been moved to second that would come out of closed session. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
We are adjourned.